Build, for example, a new housing subdivision that's outside of the downtown area. This could really come into play and be a big benefit to that kind of development. And then the 10% for Vermont program from the state treasurer, Mike P. Check's office, allows the treasurer's office to invest up to 10% of the state's average daily cash balance into projects that promote economic development and job growth within Vermont. And that is, he's really targeted housing. So, for example, local lenders can apply for these funds to offer low-interest housing loans. And that's important because it's also a source of funding for some smaller developments when you're just talking about, you know, adding another apartment, or a duplex, or an accessory dwelling unit, and not, you know, a multi-unit, huge housing development. This can really make the difference for people who can't, you know, can't make the numbers work with the current interest rates. So I think this is an important initiative that's happening across Vermont. And then I want to mention a few projects that we have in the pipeline. Not sure where that sound came from. Yeah, so development in Bennington that's either underway or is anticipated. So we, this is something that we work a lot on, you know, we're really always trying to be facilitators with local developers and the nonprofits who are working on housing, both private developers and nonprofit. So Ben Hi, of course, you've heard me talk a lot about Ben Hi, so it's under construction right now. It's very exciting to see. There are going to be 22 market rate units and 17 affordable housing units at the Ben Hi, in the Ben Hi building. And then a daycare center, which is going to help support all of those families and others. And then public spaces, including the senior center, recreation spaces, and a community auditorium. So another exciting development, Bennington just down the road, is the Bradford Mill property. So those are going to be 33 housing units, also under construction. If you've driven by recently, you can see the new windows going in. And that's a great opportunity for Bennington, and also within, very close to our downtown. So another huge opportunity, which is why we did this Energizer reuse study, is the Energizer property. So it's currently under contract, so we're hoping that a development moves forward there. And that reuse study identified up to 200 housing units could be built in the Energizer facility. So that's, that's a huge number, and it's a beautiful building if you've ever had a chance to be inside. So also the Putnam Phase Two and Phase Three. This is a rendering. I can't promise it will look exactly like that when it, when it's built, but it is, it is moving forward with some infrastructure funds that, that are going to help kind of the first phase of the Putnam Phase Two. And that is this, this building that's wrapping around the corner of Washington. And there are anticipated 40 to 60 units in that building. The Phase Three, I don't have a rendering of, but that would be where the, the old lumberyard sheds are from Greenberg's there. And that would be a, at least as I understand it, I think it would be Cornerstone Housing Partners, formerly Shire's, working with EverNorth to develop affordable housing. And I think that those are going to be like more townhouses and 30 units. So that's, that's a big number on the other end of downtown. So these are all exciting developments that are either underway or in the pre-development phase. But I also wanted to highlight some, some more single-family homes, because this is also an important part of the mix. And I'm sure there are more of these happening, but I wanted to highlight the Chesternall-Jennings Brook, Jennings Brook developments, because we've been working with Lily West and her development company. She received some town loan funding to help jumpstart some of these homes. So there are going to be five new homes at Chesternall and 10 new homes at Jennings Brook. And this is a picture of one of them. So this is great as a starter home, or kind of the more downsizing home that we talked about. And this is important, too. So the revolving loan fund, really what we call, in the case of the housing, is the Townwide Housing Loan Fund, is another piece that the town can help with these smaller-scale And then as far as next steps for Bennington, I'm going to leave that to you guys to figure out tonight, but we really want to continue the efforts to prioritize redevelopment sites that we already have identified, encourage diverse housing products, you know, both multi-unit and single-family, et cetera, just across the board, as well as multi, kind of variable income levels. We want to partner with private developers and nonprofits to expedite permitting and facilitate sources of funding and track housing needs continuously so that every year we can be updating these numbers. And that's my last slide. An accessory dwelling unit is a name that the state came up with, I guess, but it's basically like, let's say you have a garage apartment, you know, it's a way to create another housing unit without, you know, necessarily building a whole new structure, but, or if you create a basement apartment, et cetera.
Yeah, they, if I could jump in, the, the state, basically, part of their housing regulatory reform passed some legislation that said, basically, you have to treat a property with an accessory dwelling unit the same as you would a single-family home. So any, any place you allow a single-family home, you also have to allow an extra unit, ADU.
Shannon, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I think that was a great kickoff point for the, the conversation tonight, or at least I hope so. So by now, we should all know how these listening sessions work. We're here tonight to hear from you guys. Any ideas you might be able to bring to the table? We are especially interested in hearing ways about, any ideas you might have about increasing supply or reducing, or improving affordability around housing. But of course, all topics are open. If you're here to stop, talk about something that's not housing, we'll give you time for that after we've concluded this portion. So. Up to the microphone, though, please, Maria. Thank you.
I'm Maria Kraus, President of Bennington, Vermont. On my street, everyone tends to be more in my age range. And when their kids go off to college and they want to come back, they can't afford to come back. So a lot of the elders, we talk to each other, you know, we're positioned at that point where we're at that point where we're going to be getting our pensions or 401Ks and things like that. And I said, wouldn't it be nice, since some of us have half an acre or more sometimes, like if we could put a small housing in the back, let the kids come back and they could have the big house? It's always been an issue that we've always talked about. It was like, wouldn't it be great to just have a little, one of those tiny houses we always see? And then the elderly can move in there and the young can have the big house? It's something that I think that should be allowed in Bennington, if the land, I mean, if it's permanent, if it's allowed. And I guess there are limitations on the size, I guess if it's a half an acre or more or something like, or a quarter of an acre or more. It's easy to access sewer, water, because the buildings right in front of it would cost less, as opposed to ripping up new. Just an idea.
I know other communities have had success with, with allowing some tiny housing, and Dan is raising his hand.
I don't want folks to think that they can't do what Maria is asking about. Actually, state law, state law requires, as Jim had mentioned, that, sorry, I'm not sure if this is working, so, that you have to allow an accessory dwelling unit on a, on a single-family lot. So any single-family home automatically qualifies and is allowed and is permitted to, provided they can, they have access to water and sewer, et cetera, to have an accessory dwelling unit. And the primary owner doesn't have to live in the larger structure. They could live in the smaller structure, as you suggest, and rent out or, rent out the larger home. So that's explicit in our regulations now. It's not only, we've been doing it for a long, long time here in Bennington, but it is now state law. So even if we didn't want to, we'd have to, but we've always wanted to. I would encourage anybody who has a single-family home and would like to look into what they need to do to put in an accessory dwelling unit, to talk with the folks at the Building and Zoning Department in Bennington, and we can walk you through the process. But it's an as-of-right effort. You do not have to go to a DRB meeting or anything like that. You will get a permit, as long as you meet the requirements.
I still presume, given what happens, she has a prior requirement that it has to be attached. See, I have both, or?
It can be separate.
It has to be attached. Keep some of your neighbors with the parents going.
It's not part of the.
Remind you, if you're talking, you need to be near the microphone so that Cat TV could pick you up, but thanks. Anyone else? Sam, welcome back.
Thank you. Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. As you know, I've had a, I've been absent here, trying time. And funny on the topic here about housing, I've come into this situation myself. I've had medical issues, both my parents have passed away, taxes are hard to pay, and what happens is you have to downsize. And I'm not the only one. The baby boomers, the tsunami is coming, if it's not already here. And the proof is in the pudding. Which a fair to neglect is, because of the housing situation, our lodging has taken a hit. How much is our, of our lodging that we've got? We're open arms, we're ready for business here in Bennington. Do we have people to come and visit, to stay here? Or are they going to pick up their bags and stay somewhere else, or we're going to be a pit stop? Yes, you got a Naughty Pie Motel, you got the Paradise, you got the Hampton, you got other places that are there, and other private places that you can stay. But the, the double-edged sword is, it's, housing is affecting everybody. It's affecting our business, our workers, which was, been stated earlier, and I hope this is on the website, we're people that, there should be more people here at the meeting. And for the viewers at home, I hope you watch this presentation. But it's going to be an ongoing situation. Line up your trades, line up the workers, go through permit process. It's not going to happen overnight. Common occurrence is, look what, what happened with, on Pleasant Street. That took quite a few years just to get some housing down. So it's a slow process of hitting this rock pile. I'm grateful that, you know, the Lozan building is going to have 30 units. Phase Two of the, of the Putnam block, I don't think that's going to happen. So we have the properties, it's just a matter of developing them.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else have thoughts?
I have one more question, about trades.
Come on up.
Go right ahead, Tom.
Oh, I didn't see it back there, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Chris, could you slouch a little?
I'm Scott Winslow, Bennington. I had two questions. I don't expect anybody to answer them, and I'm not a housing expert by any stretch of the imagination. But one is, we, we talk a lot about the constraints to housing, whether it's zoning or wastewater treatment, or availability of tradespeople. Is there any, do we know, is there any data around, like, what those constraints are? Like, how many housing units would we get by upgrading the wastewater treatment? Or how many housing units are we lacking because there aren't contractors? Or how many would we get from zoning changes? I'm just asking the question if that data exists. My second question, my thought of when I was looking at Shannon's presentation around rental properties, if there's any data around the ownership structure of the rental properties? What I mean is, are they onsite? Are they local? Are they absentee? Are they private individuals? Are they corporations? Are they for-profit corporations that are making money off of low-income housing? Or are they other corporations that are getting tax write-offs off of losing money on low-income housing? I would love to know what that ownership structure of the rental real estate is. That's, those are my questions. Thanks.
And did you just wave at me?
Yeah, I can address the.
Thank you.
As far as the ownership, that's a lot of data behind.
But it's a good question. We do see more and more out-of-town landlords, unfortunately, but I don't have the data. As far as wastewater capacity, we have enough capacity to handle a lot more housing, so that's not a constraint. As far as zoning, we have some of the more permissive density allowances of any place in the state, so I don't think that that's an issue in, in Bennington with regard to density of housing and allowing housing in, in almost virtually every situation, whether it's mixed use, single-family, townhomes, et cetera. So I don't think that's a constraint. I do think there may be some constraints with regard to the trades and the contractors. But I will tell you the number-one thing, and maybe it's a, a measure of, of lack of tradesmen, et cetera. The number-one thing that stops developers from building housing is the cost. They just can't build a house for, and be able to make the money back on rents or, or selling. The numbers just don't work. And that's why, in the past, we've had to do a lot of public-private partnerships, and a lot of places have had to take advantage of public money to, to close that gap. And I wish that weren't the case, but in many cases it is. Although we do have some success stories. Lily West is doing it largely without public money, although some, some loans from the town, et cetera. So there's hope, but it's, it is a challenge. The money's, the money's the biggest issue.
I, I just expand a little bit on what, what Dan said, because he's right. I mean, it's, it's really cost of labor and cost of materials where we are that really drives the prices. It's, we're really in an interesting situation. It's really kind of a, a market failure, because the, the cost of building a house is too high for the cost of an average resident to purchase or, or pay the rent for, for the housing that's built. So that destroys the incentive to build, build the housing in the first place, because nobody, nobody can afford it. So the, you know, the, the answers to that particular failure is to somehow bring down the cost of housing, somehow increase the wages of people so that they can afford the housing, or more likely, some combination of the two. And it's, it's, it's pretty tricky with the tools that we have to be able to do that. I think that's why, as Dan mentioned, we rely on these public-private partnerships and, you know, some, especially some, you know, nonprofit housing development recently, in recent years, to do a lot of the, the housing development in the area, really in Vermont. And I, I'm very eager to find a way, kind of out of that box, so that we can see more private development of, of housing that's affordable for folks. And one, one of the things I see is, as you saw in Shannon's presentation, is that, and I'm very, I'm very pleased about this, because it's good and it's efficient, but most of the housing that we're developing is relatively large, multifamily housing, which is good, but it's not right for everybody. And so that, that's a really tough nut to crack when you're trying to find ways to do that single-family duplex-type thing, or even the missing middle housing, which is maybe a little bit easier, because some people can redevelop existing homes into, you know, two, two- and three-family units. But yeah, it's, it is a problem, and, and I don't know, so there's an easy answer to it. But see, that's why we're having sessions like this, because I, hopefully, people have some thoughts to get us thinking about it. So thank you.
And I know through my work, that I hear from a lot of the homeowners that I work for, that we definitely have a need for more people in the trades, particularly, I hear electrician a lot, plumbers are, are very much in demand. So young folks, if you're interested in really rewarding, well-paying career, the trades are definitely something that I think they should be looking at. Mr. Bethel.
Mr. Haley, how are you? Hi. Mike Bethel from Bennington, Vermont. I saw the presentation, I wish she hadn't left, but she did. I, I still believe you've either got to do things equally, or you put the cart before the horse. All this housing is great and all the wish list, but where are these people going to work? What are the salaries if we do get new companies here, new investment here, private or something like an Amazon that wanted to go to Essex? Why don't we have some of our staff look to see to bring business here? When you have business here and workers here, they then have money, then they pay for the housing, this private investment. Every meeting for the last, I don't know how long, when we talk about housing, who's going to pay for it? Who's going to move into it? Not just elderly people wanting to get rid of their big homes and maybe move into something smaller, but when you do the numbers, and I've talked to a bunch of elderly people that would like to downsize, they can't afford to live in these apartments that you people, not you people, I don't mean you directly, are building. It's as high or higher than what they're paying in their old houses. So I mean, you have to start looking at realism in this town. Where are the jobs? Essex County, I, from what I understood, Amazon didn't want to go there. Has anybody on this board or anybody in our town reached out to Amazon, or any company like that, to say Bennington is willing, you know, ready and able to take you on and will give you tax breaks? And will do things like that. Then the rest of it comes naturally. If you have somebody like an Amazon saying they're going to bring 200 jobs here or whatever, people will flock here. But a meeting like this, no offense, folks like Sam, how you doing? Nobody showed up even here. You've got to do it the other way around. We've got to find a way and get a committee or get into the board to start talking about realistic things, about what can we bring to Bennington? And do studies on, is the hospital growing in staff or depleting in staff? And some of the other things like Mack Molling and all of them. But we need to bring more business here with money and investment. Can I get an answer to that?
Sure. I, I think, there's good points, Mike. I, I think we may have to agree to disagree a little bit on, on this one, but we've, we've looked at economic development initiatives and trying to attract larger businesses to the area, not just Bennington, a great deal in the past. And to be perfectly honest with you, it's extraordinarily difficult to turn what you said on its head. It's extraordinarily difficult to attract a large employer to an area when you don't have workers to fill the jobs. So we really found that you need, you need the housing stock to bring the people in. And that kind of has to grow organically, to bring people into the area, young professionals, young workers, people who are entrepreneurial, that start to build up a lot of small businesses. And that leads to more housing development, more people, and then some of the larger businesses may come in. But you're going to, you're not going to attract somebody who needs 200 workers to a community that does not have 200 workers or anywhere close to it available.
Well, Jim, not to get into an argument, but the 200 workers do not have to live exactly in downtown Bennington. They can be in Shasbury, they can come over the border from New York, they come where there's a gold mine, okay? And the gold mine is not here in Bennington. And you people haven't addressed the taxes. I hope at some meeting you will. What are you going to do to start lowering the taxes, or at least keep them neutral? They go up 6% every year. That discourages big companies, small companies, or anybody to want to come to Bennington. And you got to start, I mean, I've always had to live in the real world, I don't know about somebody else in this town, but I live in the real world. And reality is, if there's a company that we could recruit, and when's the last time one of our personnel tried to recruit any company? Failed or not, when is the last time anybody tried to recruit a company to Bennington? There isn't one. What does BCRC and BCIC, when it was in, what have they done? We need to face the facts and can't keep doing these meetings and putting up this thing about housing, housing, housing. Great. Each apartment is going to cost, Zach Hale or whoever is now doing it, $600,000 to create one of his 39 apartments. Lozan, Bradford, whatever you want to call, call it, says they own paying, what are they, 30, 10 apartments, and they're going to put up $5 million, $10 million for it? I mean, we've got to come down to the realization, nobody's going to be able to afford these housing units that you want if we keep going with high taxes and no private money to offset it. And I wish you people, the seven of yous, or six of yous, the other guy's a millionaire now, so he's probably not going to show up, but get a small committee of serious people. You know, Jackie, I think, went to Bennington College. Jim, I've known you for years, we've battled, disagree, agree, but you're a smart son of a gun, clocks had world experience. Nancy's been talking about what I've been talking about. Sarah, eh, I like her, but, no, she did a great thing with the, with the food thing. And she's, she knows what I'm talking about, about business. She's a businesswoman. You know, so I, I just wish you guys would start concentrating on that and putting some effort from Dan and his team to talk about realistic things of how we can get jobs here. So that's my two cents, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Hi, Mike, thank you for your input. You know, maybe at this point, I might be putting the car ahead of the horse, but there are people in this room and the community who we, for the last couple of months, have been meeting and trying to put together just what you said. You know, it's, it's a long road to hoe to bring all these elements together in perfect synchronization. We're dealing with everything from social issues to economics, to political, business issues. There's a lot, a lot of things that we're having to kind of drag ourselves through. For whatever it's worth, my, my son is, is at New Mexico, he sent me an article about rehabilitating housing, affordable housing out there. And they're spending, the average house in Albuquerque is $360,000. They're spending close to $500,000 per unit to rehab public housing. So what's happening here with us is not unique to us. But for whatever, you know, just to answer your question, yes, there are people in this town attempting to do the very things you just said. We're, we're putting together, you know, an ad hoc task force, it's kind of a floating membership. We're looking at people, maybe have state legislators come in, maybe have people who are in the chamber, different entities that can help guide us to do the very things you're mentioning. So, you know, rest assured to you and the folks out there, all the things that Mike has said here, we've listened to them and we're actually trying to address them. You know, can I be specific about things? No, but I can say the things that you addressed, we also have recognized and are trying to address.
Well, let me, excuse me, let me be specific. If you wanted to boost the idea, or your idea, that you did, what I would do is, I would come up with the six, seven of yous, and at the next meeting, the Select Board meeting, say that you are forming a committee, and even tonight say, so the press will pick it up, we'll get that lazy reporter Jim Theory in to write something, that Bennington is looking for jobs, new investment, we'd love to talk to Amazon, and just put it out there. It's not going to hurt, and that will travel through the internet and Facebook and everything else. We need to start letting people outside of Bennington know that we're alive and well, and we are taking nourishment. And maybe look to Jackie, who's pretty smart, get Bennington College if they can do anything, or any of the other colleges, Williamstown. Start getting a committee of people. Go to the people that own the Walmart block. Go to Gladstone that owns Home Depot. Ask these people, come to a meeting and give us some ideas of how we can boost Bennington's economy. We need to do it, and we need to do it pretty quick, because I'm telling you right now, nobody's going to be able to afford these units when and if they ever get built. Nobody. If somebody has a $300,000 house, older person, that's where it's valued at, and they sell it, okay? They're not going to, if they've got that much free money, they're not going to live in one of these, no offense, rinky-dink, small units, paying $1,200 to $1,500 a month. They're going to leave with their money. So, I mean, I'm not an economist, but I've lived a long time, I'm getting older by the minute, and you people are sick of listening to me, but I really wish you'd taken an idea. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But guess what? Let's try something different. Form a committee and say, we are going to look at encouraging businesses to look at Bennington. And this meeting here, no offense, all good intentions, we're talking to ourselves. And there's no reporter here, there's nothing here, okay? And will Jim pick it up maybe on the, you know, Cat TV replay show? But we need to get it in the paper, the front page, doesn't have to be tomorrow, but you guys are forming a committee, because we do understand taxes are high, we need to level them off. If we can't lower them, we need to level them off. And we need to bring business here to afford the housing that you're talking about.
All right. Thanks, Mike. I can tell you that Representative Greer did let us know that he did contact Amazon as soon as he heard that they weren't going to Essex. And they were not, for, for a number of reasons, particularly our proximity to major highways and airports, I believe.
Where's Essex, where's Essex, Essex County? Where is Essex?
By Burlington.
It's in the Northeast Kingdom.
Actually, I think it's in Chittenden County. Essex is the town.
Their father, huh? Okay? Then we are. We're located to New York, Boston, within.
And, and because of that, Mike, there's several other Amazon distribution centers within about 50 miles of here. within about 50 miles of here, and, and so there's not a need for them to build in this community.
Okay. So now we beat up the Amazon. Is there any other company that might like?
I, I do want to push back on the idea that we're not attracting businesses to Bennington. There's been dozens of businesses opened here in the last year, 18 months, Burger King, Starbucks, Chipotle, like, there's a list, Haberdasher, Kingsnitwit, Union South, like, there's businesses opening in this area.
Those are small businesses.
They are small businesses.
They pay benefits, they don't pay high wages, they don't pay a 401, nothing.
Regardless, we're getting a little off the topic of the evening. We do have an economic development discussion scheduled for another listening session a little bit farther down the road, um, but we do want to keep the focus on the housing issue tonight. But Mike, I do appreciate your passion. Thank you.
Tom, Nancy has something.
Well, I've had some questions, but Shannon left, but I'll ask them anyways. When using housing statistics, I don't understand why the numbers from the U.S. Census weren't used. These were accurate numbers for Bennington rather than average numbers that they were using. Um, you hear a lot about people renting, and I think in, in affordable housing, they don't have to pay more than 33% of what they, what they earn a year. We never hear about homeowners. I'd like to know on average, how much does it cost the homeowner in Bennington? Their mortgage, their taxes, their utilities? I think that most are probably paying more than 30% a year. Um, I'd like to know how many units of government housing we have in Bennington right now today? Heard a lot about young professionals the past couple of years. We have a lot of young people that work 40 hours a week in Bennington that aren't professionals, but they work just as hard, and we have to give them equal consideration. Couple of numbers I'd like to share. In 2012, the poverty rate in Vermont was 11%, in Bennington it was 15%. In 2019, the poverty rate in Bennington was up to 20.4. Now, in the new proposed town plan, the B C R C does not provide what the actual poverty rate of the town of Bennington is, and I need to know, we need to know what that number is next Wednesday at the public hearing. If we're, if we're going to continue to create more and more government housing, and a, a number of that is for people at the low income level, I think what we're going to continue to do is drive up our own low, low income and poverty rate. And you can't fund the future of a town using low income and poverty. And I agree with Mike. I mean, economic development is jobs. The jobs we've watched in Bennington are the jobs we've had for 100 years, restaurant, retail, healthcare and education. If you don't have a degree, most people working 40 hours can't afford to live in Bennington. And for the B C I C was created, I don't know, 40 years ago, Bennington County Industrial Corporation, their job, their mission, they worked with business owners, they worked with officials in Bennington and Bennington County to try to create or bring new jobs to Bennington and Bennington County.
Are you going to bring this to housing?
Well, sure. You, you can't talk housing without jobs. I mean, it's surprising how many people who work in Bennington, who live in other towns, they don't want to live here. A lot of people drive anywhere from half an hour to an hour. And this is the way it's been all my life. They, they don't want to live in Bennington, they're happy where they are. So this idea that we need 600 or 700 apartments, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Um, Dare hasn't spoken yet, Maria, so we'll let her go.
I just had an answer to your question. Sorry, hi, Dare Chapman, it's Bennington. The ACS survey is actually the U.S. Census.
Okay.
Just so, yeah.
Thank you.
And last I checked, the poverty rate is around 15% in Bennington?
That there's not, not in the town of Bennington. If, in 2019, if it was 20.4%, it, it hasn't been decreasing. Actually, it's...
I'd be careful about making assumptions, Jackie.
The, the town plan says the poverty rate's 13 and a half percent.
I'm sorry?
The, the updated town plan says the poverty rate's 13 and a half percent.
Then, then I would question how it dropped 5% in six years.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet, like an opportunity to speak? Maria, I see you. Okay, Maria.
So, I'm listening to what you said and the issue of cost to build and, and affordability for young adults. I tend to look at supply and demand and certain things, right? If you create a skilled workforce, they're going to make more money and it, and it creates an opportunity for, for builders to use affordable skilled workers. Because when an electrician comes into this town and they see it's only two, three, they can raise their rate, any time, anything that they want. I'm telling you, it's true. But if you create a workforce where you're, you're, you're teaching them skills and in a short time period, not everyone needs to go to college to get a four-year degree to become an electrician. You know, they can become trade skilled workers. They, they make more money, cost of building will go down, businesses will come in. So how do we do that? Well, if we could put people in shelters and house them in bunk beds, why can't we create a school, right? That has, you know, a place where at least kids can go in there and get taught within a six period of time, somehow, somehow, I don't know how. And then it's just turn around, turn around, another skilled force, another skilled force, carpenters, electricians, this and that. Now, they can work here or outside. They might stay here because now they're making more money, they're not just making minimal wages. They might be wait, working in Massachusetts, they might be working in Albany, but they can stay here and afford the rent here because now they're making more money. They're skilled. I think we need to look at the, giving kids the opportunity to have hard skills.
That's at the vocational center at the high school. That's, that's what they go there, building trades, they learn a lot of things.
Let me tell you something, knowing some people in my family that have hard skills, some of them with four degrees or eight-year degrees, it's a joke. I'm telling you, it's a joke. It's a joke with some of these skills. I'm, I'm a woman in my 60s and if I have someone that I hire from there and they don't know the name of a tool, but I do, some of them are really, really good, some kids are really, really good, they take it on and they learn more and more and more and more and they, they further their education. But it's not true, it's not as good as having a school that's dedicated specifically...
That's, that's the programs at the high school. The kids start out plumbing, building trades, electric, and, and anybody in town who has a business like this, they would, they would hire those kids in a second. Sorry?
Do you know who the electrical inspector is in, in Bennington?
Do I know who it is?
We're, we're, we're getting off topic again, I'm afraid. I don't disagree with you that we need more tradespeople at all.
It's me with the, it's me with the guys, the men that have power, that, that passing the code, they're the first to tell you. It's not, don't take it from what I say. Take it from the professionals who are the ones with the power to pass an inspection. And, and you'll see what they, they say. I can't believe who went to this trade school. How can they not know that? I can't believe that it went this, how can they not know that?
All right.
It's not, these are Vermonters, they've been here forever and they're really, really good at doing their work and passing inspections.
Maria, I don't want to... I, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but I think if you have concerns about the education, that's a different board.
I don't have a concern. No, I don't have a concern. I say we need to expand on that, we can give them more, more skills. Or maybe we could need to find out who's teaching them. Maybe the person who's teaching them should not be just an ordinary person, it should be an inspector teacher.
All right. Thanks.
You know, things like that.
Thank you.
Make more money, bring the housing cost down, and a place for them to stay while they're learning.
I, I would agree along with everybody else with most everything you said, but I want to highlight the fact of what Nancy was referring to, the building trades program at Southwest Vermont Tech is an outstanding program that trains, um, uh, kids in our, in our area to do, to do exactly, to do exactly those types of jobs. What we need to do is maybe, um, encourage more kids and publicize, have more, just as Tom said, that there's some real great career opportunities because more people go into that, the supply of labor goes up and that definitely helps with the cost of labor. So, thank you, Maria.
You do have a great carpentry program out there.
Well, I mean, you know, you've, you've got one of the garages in town, you had the, the guy who owned that running the mechanics program. You've had people in building trades, builders doing that. Guys can go out and do tree works. A lot of the people running the business were the, are the people who've been instructors over the years. So, it, it's unfortunate, too many kids started focusing on, um, computer tech or, well, maybe I'll go to college, I don't need to learn a trade. There's a lot of kids, that's what they need to be doing.
Yep.
I tell kids, if you don't, don't know what to, be a plumber. Plumber's going to make more than anybody in the next 10 years because you're always going to need a plumber.
Any answer to that?
All right, we're not, can we, we need to stop this. I'm sorry.
You said you have an electrician, you will know, you will...
I, I really, we do need more electricians. There's no doubt about it.
Sometimes you have an electrician who knows how to put up lights and things like that and walk. And then you have an electrician who knows how to inspect on a boiler, inspect on a system, and those are the companies that need those type of electricians.
Okay.
When the companies come in, they need...
We could, we could talk about this further when we get into a, a topic that's more at hand for it.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you, but, and I, I know you got off on a, we got off on a little tangent there, but does anyone have anything else that they want to talk to about housing? Chris?
Chris Maxey, Bennington. Is there any thought about, um, you know, a vacancy tax for commercial property in, in Bennington? Because the, uh, there's plenty of buildings that are in the downtown district of Bennington that are vacant, sitting unoccupied, the offices are empty, that could be converted into workable businesses. I mean, the amount of office supply that we have in Bennington that's vacant right now could easily be converted into residential and would be in the downtown area. And perhaps some sort of tax break or tax incentive to converting the zoning from office to residential would provide some incentive for people to make the investment to convert the property rather than just sit on it vacant and have it be left unoccupied. Would be my, one of my thoughts for that. The other thing is, is we like to think about these giant mega corporations coming into Bennington and saving us like a white knight, whether it be Amazon or any of these other, other companies that are going to come in. Most of them don't pay, uh, much more than minimum wage, they don't pay benefits, they don't, uh, actually provide anything. Most of them end up polluting the environment and sapping the town of the resources. And instead, perhaps what we should be looking at are the people that are working from home. More and more people in the city are getting work from home jobs, it's a trend, the urban sprawl of people that are millennials and younger that are working from home, working from a camper, uh, digital nomads would find Bennington to be a perfect opportunity. And we don't need to have some giant corporation come and employ 200 people when we could have many companies, small companies be paying them. I mean, my company, my day job is, is an accountant. I actually, uh, started learning accounting at the technical school. And all of my employees are remote workers. They all work all over the country, they move around all the time. Those people are looking for homes too, and a home in, uh, Boston is going to cost you 700, 800,000 dollars. And we, we look around and we see Bennington as being so expensive, but to them, the homes are basically free. So, why not advertise to them?
I do, I have a number, I know a number of people that moved to Bennington and work remotely, and they chose Bennington for a lot of the reasons that we've talked about over and over again, the, the walkability, the, um, focus on the downtown, um, and the lower cost of housing compared to the metro areas, um, that you just mentioned. We do have town staff looking at ways, uh, currently to address, um, not only the vacant retail space, but also vacant, um, housing stock. They're looking at ways other towns are attempting to address that, see if we can learn from those, then come up with something that'll actually suit Bennington, but it is something that we are already working on.
Thanks. Yeah, that second part was what I was going to say, but I had another thing on my mind too. Um, you know, bringing jobs to Bennington is, is something that we all want to do and, and we all want to bring people to Bennington and businesses to Bennington. And we, we have to remember at the same time that we, we can't just do that on a blank slate, just say, you know, Bennington has a really nice name, so come to Bennington. We have to provide the things in Bennington that will attract businesses, that will attract jobs, that will attract, attract people that will invest in our community to expand the tax base in our community. So, we have to remember, we're competing with towns and cities all around the region, and they are actively investing in themselves. And not that we're not, but we need to be aware of the fact that if we don't invest in ourselves, if we don't provide things that people want, we're going to stagnate and those other communities are continuing to grow. And that definitely is going to affect the price and availability of housing, the affordability of housing, and what people pay in property taxes. So, we need to think about that, that we exist in a competitive market ourselves.
May I, may I have a question, please? If you can...
You have to cover the microphone, please. Here you are.
I spend a fair amount of time on the internet, and one of the things I have been researching are houses and housing prices. Now, there's a huge range in America now that there didn't used to be of non-traditional material houses, some of which retail for under $20,000. Now, I don't, I very much doubt they have the length of time of existence, the ones we have at the moment do, but they would certainly fill in the gap for a good while. And there's a school down in New Haven which has just built a complete, what they call a sustainable village. Now, it's 92 million dollars, so that's not our particular bivouac, but the idea of having a community of houses, small houses, that are within themselves sustainable, food, solar energy, water, all those kind of things combined is one unit. I mean, these ideas that are out there, are we thinking about them at all? Are they worth thinking about? And the other thing which I'm sure will be very, very unpopular, we have in this town, I'm sure you know, a number of people who are beyond helping, who sleep in the drains along the court, road there, under the bridges, all that kind of thing. Is it not possible for us to have a drunk house like Middlebury have? That at least in the winter, you know, these people won't die at least of, not of starvation, but of cold and exposure?
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you. What was your name, please?
It was Mark, was it Margaret?
Yes.
And where are you from?
Bennington.
Oh, thank you.
Margaret, could you tell us your last name, please, ma'am? Just for the record.
Was it Fletcher?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Nancy?
Yeah, just two quick things. People have to remember in Bennington, we're never going to have what Bradmorel has. Bradmorel has Interstate 91, very easy. Um, transportation, whether you're getting jobs, whether you want to transport materials, so, that's one thing that, it concerns me with this being so tied to Bradmorel economically, I see them as our competition. The other thing about people working from home, I don't know much about AI, but what I've been reading in recent months are the number of jobs that are already being cut because these AI centers are taking the jobs over. People getting out of college with their computer tech jobs, can't find jobs, other people losing jobs, and it, and it's scary to read about the amount of jobs that are going to be gone in this country in, in the next 10 years. So, I, I just don't know if, if people would want to get so set working from home, can they be sure that they would have jobs in a few years?
Anyone else have, Sam? This is about housing?
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. Just a thought, um, what's been in front of my eyes for the last eight months is healthcare. And I see it come and go. You've got CNAs, RNs, LPNs that are transit workers. They come from Albany, they come from Louisiana, Alabama. Alabama. Those are the fish that we really need to catch. We've got to be good salesmen out there and keep hitting this hard time, not wing off and don't think about it for six months and then come out and spotlight Bennington again. It's an ongoing thing. I think healthcare is a big thing. We've got a cancer unit that's going to currently be developed here in our hometown. We're very fortunate that we've got a good hospital here, but I think we really need to focus on healthcare. And I don't know what the plan with SVMC or whoever, where they built houses to keep doctors and nurses and healthcare officials and staff here in Bennington to work instead of living out of a suitcase. But it's an ongoing problem. You've got the young ones that are coming in. You've got the ones that are retiring going out. And I know I'm preaching to the choir. And while I have the microphone on hand, I couldn't help but notice coming in on the west end of town that we are a Purple Heart community. Can we get the state to sit there and cut the vegetation back so we know that we are a Purple Heart community? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay.
And then just one thing for Sam. Sam, I don't know if you realize, but the traveling nurses and aides that come in, they get paid more than the regular nurses and aides that live and work here.
Okay.
So, and usually they also get help with housing.
All right. Does anyone else have anything on housing? Clark?
Housing, you know, when I ride around town or some of the other mill towns I go, I notice, and we look out the window and see that rural houses in front of the old mills. So the link between jobs and housing is in front of our very eyes. And I think it's critical that it's a two-pronged approach. We just can't slay this dragon in one fight. So it's very, very important that we continue what we're doing. You know, as I mentioned, we have that committee. We're reaching out to the public. We're all ears, you know? And I would love nothing more than, you know, somebody to send a promissory note to Dan saying, hey, we're bringing this to your town, you know? We need to expand our tax base. And I think bringing businesses here is a good way to do that and make this town more livable.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember, too, that a lot of the housing that we do have here in Bennington, particularly in Benmont Avenue area, the areas out behind the Lozon Building, the mill owners at that time built that housing because they knew that they needed to house their employees, or else they wouldn't have any. So it's still a thing that we're talking about today because it still remains true. So I think that's actually a fairly good place to stop that part of the meeting tonight. Does anyone have anything that they brought with us that they'd like to talk about that's not related to housing?
I have one housing thing.
Oh, you do have a housing thing. Okay, go ahead. Sure.
Okay.
My name is Davis Belanca. I'm fortunate and privileged to own my home in downtown Bennington, and I believe that healthcare and housing are a human right. People should not be denied that, or else you have people in the ditch dying in the winter. So I think that's something we as a country need to value more. And I have to say, I do not want Amazon here. I think Amazon is evil. And I think they're very anti-worker. I wouldn't want to work there. I feel bad for people that work there. I think that's a horrible idea. So just had to put that out there. And I do want to bring up homelessness as well. It's the end result of what happens from unaffordable housing. A social safety net keeps people from becoming homeless with cuts to Social Security and Medicaid. I'm afraid of what will happen in the near future to our country, let alone Bennington. I don't know if there's anything that Bennington can do to help with the nationwide issues. It's a nationwide issue. There have been good results from studies done on universal basic income. Is, I don't know if there's anything that Bennington can do similar to that, that helps the community from the bottom up versus Jeff Bezos down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does Clark quickly?
Sam, to answer your concern, that sign you mentioned is actually on private property, but I will be down there tomorrow with my weed whacker and chop those bushes, chop those bushes out. Right, you know, I drove by next Thursday. I saw that. Yes, it's graciously placed on private property, and I will go down there tomorrow and take care of that. So in terms of the town or the state, it's not within their purview.
I'm going to comment.
Sarah?
Davis, thank you for your comment, and I feel like you're just touching the edge of things that you want to comment on, so I encourage you to be in touch with your legislators. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Does anyone else have anything else they want to bring up?
I have no comments.
Come on up.
Okay, Davis, again. I live off Main Street by Morgan Street Cemetery, and that stretch of road is one of the most dangerous places in town. There's no sidewalk, no shoulder at all. On one side of the house is practically in the road, and on the other side, there's a six-foot stone cemetery wall. There's a lot of foot traffic, kids on bikes, parents with strollers, people walking dogs, and there's literally nowhere to step out of the way if a car or a large truck comes flying by. Cars come flying down the hill way over the limit, easily 50, 60 miles an hour, slam on their brakes at Main Street. The ones heading up the hill floor it loudly to gain speed, which makes it even scarier. The posted limit may be 35, 30, 35, but it's not being followed, and it feels like a racetrack. I've personally witnessed near misses. One that sticks with me is a mom with a stroller pinned right up against the cemetery wall as a truck flew past. There's no margin of safety. Our own kids, if they're walking anywhere in town, the most dangerous part of that walk is Morgan Street. That says everything. If a sidewalk isn't possible, then speed has to be the focus. This needs to be a slow speed zone. Drop it to 15 or 20 miles an hour. Back it up with enforcement. Even putting in one of those digital radar signs that tells drivers how fast they're going would make a huge difference. Right now, it feels like we're just waiting for a serious accident, and it shouldn't take someone getting hit before the town acts. Thank you again.
Right. We do have a way for you to initiate that process, and I'd encourage you to actually, Dan, can you brief her quickly?
We do have a policy that was recently passed for folks who live in neighborhoods that would like to see traffic calming, to slow folks down. And I think the best way you could go on our website, but part of this thing is just to contact Jonas Pivak at our office, and he can, he'll send you the information, and we can go through that process. It's also worth letting the PD know that you've seen, yep, so it's going to be on their radar, too. But we do have a process to try to look at areas of traffic calming. I know Jim, I'm surprised Jim didn't jump in yet, but...
I'm about to.
I'm going to let you do the next one.
No, my point is, to no one's surprise, I jump in on this, but yeah, while this doesn't address the homes that are immediately adjacent to and across from that constrained section of Morgan Street where the cemetery retaining wall is, we do have a project in the works that was approved by the Select Board to provide an alternate route for pedestrians and cyclists from Main Street through the Village Cemetery and back down onto Morgan Street where there's a much, where it's much safer and bypasses that dangerous section. So thank you for your comments.
Two things. Over the last 40 years in Vermont, Vermonters have paid a lot of money to create and support programs to help people in need at the state and the local level. And many feel that we're drawing people from other states because our programs are so wonderful. Also, people need to remember, for the past 25 years, we have been the only town in Bennington County with homeless shelters. We were promised originally the shelters would be for people who lived in Bennington who became homeless. They have been used from the start for people who have come to Bennington from all over, and it's really time for Bennington residents to make it clear. Other towns need to step up, take care of their own citizens. The plan going forward, that groups want to continue to bring people from Bennington County to Bennington, it's not going to work. So other towns need to start taking care of their own citizens.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for this evening? Okay. I just want to throw something out on a personal note. While we've been meeting, having these meetings on Thursday nights, I have a job now. I should be at work right now. So if y'all could think about, if it's possible to maybe move these to a different night during the week, we can discuss that at a later point in time. Or if you want to keep them on Thursdays, I can, Jim can sit here, and I can watch and catch up on Cat TV after I get out of work.
For no other reason, I will advocate for moving the date to one that's more convenient for you.
So if y'all could think about what dates, what nights might be better for you, I'd appreciate it. So...
I think the availability of the firehouse is one of the reasons...
That's a factor, too. So Dan will, I think, handle that for me. So if there's nothing else, I thank everyone for being here. This is not a formal meeting, so we don't need to formally adjourn. But I thank everyone participating in the conversation, and please look out for the next subject very soon. So thanks very much.